Success.
This meeting is being recorded.
Righty. Good morning, everybody. We're going to call this special meeting of the Board of Selectment on February 23rd, 2022 to order at 10:13. Thanks for coming and we'll start right in. I see Jane from Chore Service. Hi, Jane.
Hi, good morning.
How are you? I'm gonna add you to our spotlight so you can sort of be a larger pain. It's nice to meet you. We haven't met before.
We have not met. Thank you for allowing me to join this morning. I do appreciate that.
Sure. Thanks for coming.
So the reason I'm here today is we did ask for an increase in our funding from the town of Kent. We're actually asking all of the towns in our catchment area for an increase. Our funding has remained flat as our requests remain flat. We haven't asked for an increase since 2016, I believe, from Kent. So as most of you know, Chore helps elderly and disabled residents live safely and independently at home. By when we provide non-medical assistance to them so they can remain in their homes. Things such as house cleaning, shopping, snow removal, those types of things. We're finding that the need for Chore is increasing as the population in this area is aging. There's not family members, extended family nearby that can help these people. So they do turn to Chore for assistance. Been an employer for over 30 years. We're very proud of that. We provide part-time and flexible work for community residents. So we're very proud that we not only serve clients, but we also serve residents by providing them employment. That money that they earn goes back into the local economy. So we do worry about taking care of our clients and also our workers as well. Our goal is to provide a competitive wage to retain and attract workers. And we did have to increase our hourly wage from $14 an hour to $15 an hour. And we did that a year ahead of the Connecticut minimum wage mandate that's going into effect on June 1st, 2023. So we're always looking at ways to create a competitive wage to retain those workers. Over the past six years, Kent residents earned $30,000, which went back into the local economy. Most of our clients are living on a very limited income and they do need to make decisions between groceries, medications, and paying their bills. And we do not turn anybody away for the ability to pay. We do provide services to anybody regardless of their income and ability to pay. Chore is often the last provider of last resort. They don't have any other options, so they turn to Chore. A lot of them can't afford the VNA and so forth, so they do turn to Chore. Without Chore, residents might need to go into nursing homes. So we're hoping that by what we're doing for the towns and for the clients, that we're helping to relieve the burden to the towns for some of those social services that might be needed. We've noticed, we did a look back sort of financial analysis over the last six, seven, eight years. And we noticed that our client contributions have dropped significantly. Last fiscal year, our average contribution was $549, which is well below our actual cost of service, which is closer to probably about $50 an hour for service. Last year, Kent's average contribution was $5.05 for 400 hours of service. Again, well below the cost of the actual cost of service. We are partially funded by a grant from AAA, Western Connecticut Area Agency on Aging, which serves all clients age 60 and over regardless of their income and ability to pay. And Kent was 9% of that grant that we spent on our clients. As I mentioned, we're asking all towns for an increased amount from the annual budgets. Our overhead costs are increasing, and it's not just due to COVID. Everything is, as you know, everything has just been increasing over the last several years, and particularly this last year. We found that we need to pay our workers more. We're also paying more in mileage for the workers to get to remote places. We do have people that live in Sharon or even Canyon that drive down to Kent to service clients if we don't have a worker that's available in the Kent area. So we are paying mileage to help offset some of their costs. We're also having to do more staff trainings, which costs us money to do that, to make sure that they're in line with safety protocols, any training that we might need to do. And we're finding that it's been best practice to use, we're seeing that we're gonna need to use the PPE equipment going forward. We work with the VNA and other community organizations. We're finding that we're gonna need to do that even as we sort of come out of this whole COVID thing. That has added additional expense to our budget. But we're finding that we're gonna need to do that for quite some time with the masks and the gloves and so forth. So that is an additional expense for us. Changing demographics, just an aging community, and just serving more people that are unable to pay, which our client contributions have been shrinking due to that. So 7% of our budget is client contributions. And that has been shrinking. And again, that's not just due to COVID or anything. We did have a PPP loan the last two years, and that helped get us through. But that wasn't all related to COVID. We did do the financial projections and we looked back and we have just been sort of, our costs have been going up over the years. We're looking at ways to, you know, increase funding in several different areas. But we're also serving a population that just can't afford to pay as much as they used to. So that's really taken a toll on us. So we have been grateful over the past, how many years that we've been receiving funding from the town of Kent? And without that support, we'd be unable to continue with these necessary services. And we're hoping that we are alleviating some of the burden to the towns by providing our services. At this point, we're not really having to limit any hours to clients. We're able to provide what the clients do need to remain safely and independently at home. And we're hoping that we're able to continue with that. So because of those reasons, that's why we're asking for an increase to $10,000 from $5,000 in the previous years.
Jane, have you seen a change in the number of workers who live in the towns that you are serving? I noticed there's two workers in your data, which is great. Thank you so much for providing the data. Is that, has that always been sort of a steady, it's fairly low numbers? Is this a Kent anomaly where you have difficulty getting workers? Or is this the right amount of workers that you need for Kent?
So we have two workers that live in Kent, but we have other workers that serve Kent. We have two, I think, workers that live in Gaylordsville, and then we do have other workers that live in, one goes from Cornwall goes down to Kent. So we have more than just two workers in Kent. Those are just people that live there. So, and like I said, we are paying more in mileage to get people down there. We do have people that are willing to travel. I do know one, like I said, from Cornwall that goes down to Kent. I think there might be one from Sharon that goes down there as well, too. But those two that are listed, those are residents of Kent. And then we have people from Gaylordsville. Ideally, we would love to have more, more workers. So we're always looking at ways to, you know, remain competitive. You know, people are raising their wages. You know, we did that well ahead of time to be in line for the Connecticut mandate for the minimum wage. So we're positioned for that, but we're always looking at ways to make sure we can retain and attract workers.
So it's not a direct correlation of how many folks you serve in a town as to how many workers you need in a town?
Correct.
Although it would reduce your costs because then you wouldn't be paying as much in mileage.
Yes. Right. And we did notice we're about double this year with the mileage so far in our budget. We weren't anticipating having to have people sort of drive all over, but they're willing to do it and willing to pay. But we are over budget with our mileage.
Okay. That is interesting. It does, I think it means that, do you track where, well, you must, you track where workers are going to do the work?
Yes, yes. And we're also, and we're always looking at ways to reach out to, you know, how can we get some people from New Milford that are willing to come up to Kent? Maybe even over from the New York side to come over to Kent to do some work as well, too. So we're doing a lot of outreach in that, in that regard as well. So we don't have a waitlist. We're very proud of that. We're able to get people placed. And again, we're willing to do that even if it means we have to have somebody who has, you know, someone who has an opening in their schedule in Sharon and they're willing to drive to Kent. We're willing to do that.
And have you seen, on the data that you sent, it's, you noted that it's 13 clients who live in Kent that you serve. Have you noticed, has there been any trend over, I know COVID is very hard to call a trend, but say over the past five years, have you seen an increase or a decrease or a steady of the number of clients that you're serving?
Um, there has been a slight decrease. We are also looking at ways to sort of expand our services a little bit, too. We do have, the VNA isn't direct competitive ours. They're able to do one-stop shopping with what they are able to provide. So we're looking at ways to sort of how can we, how can we increase our services? You know, is there more transportation options that we can provide? And also, transportation is not covered under grants, so that comes out of our fundraising.
Okay.
Is, can we do, you know, can we provide any kind of CNA services? Can we provide more in respite care? Can we provide? You know, so we're looking at ways that we can sort of expand our services and, because people are calling and if they need help with bathing or dressing, we don't do anything with hands-on or anything medical. Is there, so if they don't get all the services they need from us, they might go to a different agency. So we're trying to, and also then we get a lot of the people that can't pay. So we're also trying to tap into some people that can pay and help offset our cost of services. So we're constantly looking at ways to grow, and that's kind of our big thing right now. We're sort of doing some strategic planning to see where we might be going in the next three years and so forth, so. And transportation is a big need. It's very lacking in this area, and we do what we can. But it's not covered under our grants. That does come out of our fundraising.
And do you intersect at all with health insurance, with Medicare? Is anything reimbursed?
We don't. We don't.
I didn't think so.
Anything involved. We've been talking a lot to the other, there's a Winstead Hills Helping Hands Chore Service. And we do talk to Litchfield Hills Chore Service, and we just kind of sort of collaborate and see where they are. They all do things a little bit differently, so we're really kind of reaching out to them to see how we can sort of grow and expand and make sure that we're finding those loopholes that, where the services are. You know, an example of, you know, clients need people to shovel snow. Okay, so is that something that we should be doing that we can get into? So we're constantly looking at ways that we can kind of increase those types of things. Whereas, whereas there's a homework we fill in with that. So looking at partnering with other organizations. You know, there's a village-to-village model that they're trying to get started in this area. How can we, how can we get involved with them and so forth?
Great. I don't, I'm sorry, I was asking so many questions. Glenn Rufus.
I'm curious, because you said you did 400 hours in Kent last year?
Last fiscal year, yes.
And how many actual residents did you serve? Do you have any?
Yeah, it's, it's in the supporting documentation. It was 13.
It was 13 clients, right?
That was an average of about a little over 30 hours.
You know, and our actual cost of service is about $50 an hour. Most of our program director, she's 100% program expense. Our bookkeeper is, you know, partial program expense, and then some of what I do is program expense. About 88% of our budget is program expense and 12% is office expense.
Very lean.
We're doing what we can. We're doing what we can.
Jane, Chore's been around for 30 years. How long has Chore served the town of Kent? For how many years?
That's a good question. I believe they were in from the beginning. I would have to check on that. I've been here since 2015. I know that at one point, I think we were part of, I think we've always been Region One plus Norfolk, so we're all those seven towns. But I believe Kent's been in since the beginning, but I have to double check on that. But at one point, we were part of, I believe, Boshen in Litchfield Hills, and then we stepped back from that and split into two.
Okay, and then the contribution from Kent has remained flat since 2016, I see?
Yes. In 20, I pulled up some numbers, in 2015, it was, we received 2,500, and then in 2016, we received 5,000. And then it's been 5,000 since then.
Yep, I see that.
And that's been, that's been the request, and then that's been the actual that we received.
So again, thanks. All this information that you sent with the backup is great.
Thank you. And we enjoy looking at that information. It's very telling for us. So we do take that information very seriously. The board sees it, and we do take a look at that. And like I said, we've been doing a little bit of strategic planning in where we're gonna go and how we can, how we can grow even more and reach more people.
And you said you served 13 clients in the last year?
Yes.
13?
Yes.
Do you have data going back in time? How many, how many clients you've served here in Kent?
You said it was a slight decrease.
Right. And then also, you know, we looked at sort of the client contributions going back in time. In a 2016 in Kent, the client contributions were $9.13, and now they're down to $5.05. I don't have all of my information on, it has, it has, it has decreased slightly, but not significantly.
But year to year, it doesn't fluctuate too much. I mean, you know, one year it's not like 25 or another year 5. I mean, it's about 13.
Right, right. And last year, we served a total of 134 clients.
Okay.
For, for, for the entire catchment area. And that was for, so that was about for 4,481 hours of service last fiscal year. That's, those were direct hours for clients. That doesn't include, you know, time that we paid for training or transportation or any of those types of things. Those were direct service hours to clients.
I don't think I have any more questions. Anybody else have any more questions? Jane, do you have any questions for us?
I don't. I'd be happy to get you more concrete numbers, Glenn, if you wish.
That would be great. Yes, thank you.
Okay, be happy to do that.
Yep.
Yeah, the, so the, the data that you provided, which again, thank you so much. It would be interesting to see like maybe a five-year look back because then that goes beyond the two years of the pandemic and gets into sort of a normalized look-back trend of a few years. It would be interesting.
Happy to do that. I can get that out to you. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Is there, is there, is there an email that I should send that to, or do you just want me to send it to Joyce or?
Yeah, you can send it to Joyce and she'll get it out to us.
Okay, all right. So the number of clients.
That same, the table that's on the second page of your supporting documentation.
Yep, perfect. Happy to do that.
A five-year look back, if that's, seems like that would probably make sense.
Yep, happy to do that.
That would be great. Anybody else question? Glenn Rufus, all set?
All set. One last question. The percentage increase is the same across all the towns?
For the request.
Yes, it is. Yes, it's literally the same. Yes.
Well, thanks again, Jane. We appreciate you coming in. We appreciate you answering all of our questions.
Well, we appreciate what you do. Thank you very much.
Sure. And I'm gonna take you off Spotlight and we will add in, we're gonna go, we're just gonna go in order of the list that Joyce sent out. So we'll add in Jared and Lynn. I think we're still waiting for Lynn. Hi, Jared.
Yeah, Lynn's on her way in. She, she said she'd just give her a minute or two and she'll be here.
Sure, thanks.
Hello, Jared. I'm Glenn. First time I'm seeing you, meeting you.
Yes, hi Glenn. How are you?
Okay, very well. And you?
Good, thanks. Nice to virtually meet you.
Yes.
Hey, Lynn.
Ellen. Morning, you did.
Morning.
Yes, I am. Thank you.
Thank you for the pivot to come on. Do you want to just, either, I don't know who wants to, if either one of you wants to take the lead on just walking us through the supporting documentation?
Starting with the income? You wanna go line by line? Is that what you want? Okay.
Yeah.
So Park and Recreation, the first line, 132800 is the same. Doesn't get used a lot. It's kind of a catch-all.
Do you know what that represents as far as income?
Not too much detail. It's kind of things that don't fit into the other lines.
Okay.
It's usually things fit into the other lines. Park and Rec passes, we increased what we hope to bring in. We're also going to increase the park pass by $15. It's been the same price for a long time. I feel this year, we're gonna have a few more things to offer. We've, we're hiring a seasonal maintenance contractor to help beautify the parks. And we are going to be putting in a pickleball court. And the tennis courts do have a lock on them, so you'll have to have a park pass to use the tennis courts or the pickleball courts. And we just have some plans for some upgrades, so that's the reason for that increase, and that's based on 100 passes at $50. The 4,000 for sports, small increase due to changing the cost, the fee to play from $5 to $20. And we've already had a couple of programs since Jared's been with us. And even before that, that some of the commissioners have put on, and we've had huge, huge turnouts. So we're, see, Park and Rec classes. That line, the actual year-to-date for fiscal year '22 is incorrect because of some incorrect line coding that will be changed and updated. So we use the previous line of budgeted 500. But we did, we made almost 1,200 in fiscal year '20, so we kind of went off of that. And last year wasn't a good year to, to look at because we didn't have a lot of programs running. So that's our 10% class, which means that when people come to us and they want to run a program in town through Park and Rec, we put a 10% fee on there, and that represents that 10% fee, or should. Park and Rec enrichment is ASP. That's been going along really well. We're increasing our numbers again. And we plan on increasing the cost of that by $1, so it'll go from $11 to $12. Okay, then to Park and Rec Enrichment Camp, which is Emery Park, Camp Kent. We're gonna increase that $40 to $150 per week. And that's basically what that comes out to. We are allowed to do 24 kids. And those calculations are based on 24 kids at all, at those weeks. How many weeks? Is it eight weeks? So yeah. So it's eight weeks. And then bus trips and programs, we haven't done a lot of, obviously, but kept it in there because we don't know what we're gonna be able to do. Down to expenses. Salary Director, we have, as you all know, hired a wonderful new director. And that line increased by 6,000 to come up to some more current pay rates. Hourly employees, let's see. ASP Director. We brought up to 21. We've had a lot of trouble finding someone. Jared has stepped in and been doing a wonderful job and enjoying it. But it is a lot of time out of his day, so we are still trying to find that person. But we needed to offer a considerable compensation for anybody to even be intrigued by the position because it's such weird hours and stuff like that. So, and then the counselor, we brought up to 14 because minimum wage increases to 14 as of July 1. Lifeguards, again, we've had trouble in the past finding lifeguards. It's not just us, it's every town. So we're hoping by a slight increase in their, in their pay, that we can hopefully attract some more people. Camp Kent, same idea. We need to have a little bit better pay to, to bring in the right people. And Camp Kent, that's where we are gonna increase the weekly fees. And we have two counselors there, so we can do the 24 kids. And we have some ideas to change and improve Camp Kent. Ice monitor stayed the same. That's it for hourly employees. Supplies is kept in the middle of the line. Well, we went up a little bit because of the cost of everything going up. Postage. That put it at $15 more, or even numbers, but that could go down if we need to. I don't think, I don't really know how much postage we use. I mean, in 2020, it was pretty close. So I, yeah, we haven't used any yet this year. Mileage hasn't been used yet, but we're expecting. Mileage hasn't been used yet, but we're expecting it will be. Park maintenance. Last year it went up because we put in a seasonal maintenance contractor, but we didn't really end up using that person, but we are hoping to take advantage of some of that in the next couple of months as spring arrives before June thirtieth. We are asking for twenty-five dollars, twenty-five thousand dollars extra in the budget this year because of drainage, to take care of some drainage repairs over at Kent Commons. I'm not, we don't have any prices yet, but hopefully that can get us started. The water is draining down in a couple of different spots and wrecking the walking path and I believe the the path to get up to the tennis courts and to get up to the playground and stuff, so we've had a few complaints from the seniors regarding that, that it's a tripping hazard. Numerous people, commission members have gone over there at different times and tried to fill in the hole and they have filled in the hole until it rains again. So it's an issue that needs to be dealt with, so we're looking at that as hopefully just once this year. We didn't want to put it in capital because it's not something we can wait five years to do. Fee programs. A little bit of increase there, so we can increase some of our activities at ASP and at Camp Kent. Telephone stayed the same, electric was staying the same, water and sewer is mostly for the porta-potties at Camp Kent. And or at Emory Park and possibly at Kent Commons. Dues are for, I believe, a Park and Rec Association conferences. Those come up, you have Park and Rec Association conferences, and that's it. Any questions?
Do you guys mind if I just comment real quickly?
Yeah, no, not at all, go ahead.
Okay, cool. So first, yeah, so Lynn, thanks for presenting all that. As you guys know, I wasn't, well, I assume is, you know, I wasn't really a part of the budget process because I didn't start until after. So I'm still kind of learning all this and Lynn's been really great at kind of teaching me and showing me the ropes and everything. Just going back to Jean, your question about line one three two eight hundred, which is just the general park and recreation line. So yeah, when I spoke with Barbara, she just said, just as Lynn said, it's kind of a catch-all. So let's say we were doing an event and, you know, we sold concessions or something like that. It may not fall into any other income line, so that's where it would go. It's just kind of, kind of things that come up that like Lynn said, are kind of in between, but there's really not going to be a whole lot, like I said, concessions maybe or similar things. But not really much more because the lines are pretty straightforward with respect to what goes where. Just wanted to add onto that. Regarding the drainage, I haven't seen the issues yet, but from what everyone's told me and from what you can imagine, kind of you know, picturing Kent Commons, it's it's basically the the park is almost shaped like the letter V, right? You have a hill on one side, a hill on the other and then a little valley down in the bottom and all that water is running off both the hills, so it it really doesn't seem like there's much, if any, drainage currently, so. You know, I can, without even having been there, I can already see the issues that it presents, where it's where it's washing out. And I certainly echo Lynn's sentiments, even as the newcomer here, that, you know, probably having an engineer come, look at it, determine the best place to put drains, swales. You know, how we're gonna funnel off the water makes makes the most sense. Because it's only gonna continue, there's, you know, and then what that ultimately ends up doing is the bottom ends up all soggy. And then you have the grubs, which are obviously doing their damage as well, so really in order to kind of promote, one, a good walking trail, but two, kind of healthy, healthy soil and healthy sod, directing that water appropriately is is a must and it is, for as long as we put it off, it's just gonna continue to be a problem, so. Like I said, I'm the newbie here, but I just wanted to kind of back back up Lynn on that one. And then lastly, I know Lynn didn't mention it, but I just wanted to discuss the ball field line because I wasn't really sure who pitches that that line or presents that budget and that's just, like I said, it's a newbie question, but. Yeah, so those are the three things I wanted to weigh in on.
Thanks, Jared.
Yeah.
So just a couple of general questions. The Park and Rec pass, that is for access to the tennis courts for open skate. And what else does that, oh, to, if people are checking pass, if lifeguards are checking passes at Emory Park, I would assume.
Emory Park, not Kent Commons, and free skate.
Okay. But you don't need a pass to walk the trail in Kent Commons? It's just for access to the tennis court?
Technically, you need a pass to use it, yeah. It's part of the park. It's not just for the tennis courts.
Okay.
So we will be encouraging people and seniors, I think we have a free senior thing or we can implement one if it's, if that's what it takes, you know, or maybe make an exemption for seniors or something, I'm not sure. Maybe something we can talk about.
Yeah, I think it, I think the pass is, I thought I read somewhere that the pass is free for seniors. I guess my, from a I don't know, just a global standpoint, the park is you know, open to the public, we don't have anybody to be checking passes. I guess, Mike, do you have any concern here? It looks like the the cost of the park pass is going up like forty, over forty percent. Do you think that will be a barrier? Because obviously we don't want to, you know, we don't want to have barriers for people who want to use the tennis courts or the, or Emory Park.
No. I mean, you know, we plan on doing upgrades and like I said, the pickleball court and pickleball has been really popular. I think that'll bring a lot of
Hot new thing.
Yeah, I think that'll sell some park passes alone.
Okay.
And, you know, we have money to do upgrades to the park, so we can start talking about doing some playground equipment upgrades and using the capital funds that are available now and upgrading the pool with the capital funds that have been available. And with all the new people in town and and with with Jared's excellent skills at promotion. We had, just so you guys know, the last few you know, the last few things that we've had, we had huge success with the soccer program, we had huge success with free skate, we had huge success with Learn to Skate program. People are coming out, they're they're taking advantage of whatever is available. And, you know, I think that'll be great on Park and Rec in many ways. We're able to do more things and.
Yeah. Yeah, it would be great to see the numbers on you know, the last few programs, this, I know the ski program was popular and then you did basketball, soccer. Any of those programs, it would be great to see the number, you know, the, the, the people who are taking advantage of the program.
So, yeah, in basketball, we've had over sixty people sign up and that was just young kids, that wasn't even, you know, that was up to second grade. So four through second grade, so that was fifty people. Free skate this past Sunday, the first one we've done and we only had, like Jared said, about three days, like I said, that meeting. About three days notice and we started advertising, there was fifty people down there.
That's great.
Yeah.
Yeah, just to piggyback on that. The basketball program, which is only for children for, it was four through second grade, so we're talking pre-k. So four age, four age groups, so to speak. Yeah, we had almost, we have just about sixty kids signed up. And I certainly believe, I I have a lot of ideas and I know Lynn's really on board and so and super supportive assets, the whole commission to really expand upon that, you know, start running programs for children as young as three and going right up through you know, upper middle school and even high school. And so I really think it's gonna take, honestly, it's gonna take probably an entire year to overhaul everything, but it's certainly the goal. And I think you guys are really gonna see kind of a renaissance and resurgence in rec and I do believe you know, when it comes down to the the finances of it all, which is what this meeting is about, that we're definitely gonna see, you know, see an uptick in revenue and then, you know, ideally as time goes forward, we can really start to you know, game plan for how we're going to, how that's gonna translate into, you know, improvements to everything. But it will, it's gonna take a little bit, so not gonna, not gonna tell you it's gonna just happen overnight, but.
Sure.
Okay, can I, can I understand the revenue for a second? Just moving back in time, I'm looking at this, the sheet. So fiscal year twenty, it was budgeted for thirty-two thousand and we we brought in a little bit more, thirty-five thousand, a little bit more than thirty-five thousand. Fiscal year twenty-one, the budgeted was thirty-two thousand seven fifty. Pandemic's in full swing, we only brought in a little bit over ten. This current year, we budgeted for a little bit over eleven thousand and we got surprised with seventeen, a little bit higher.
No, the the Park and Rec classes, line eight, one three two eight thirty, that says ninety-nine ninety-three. That's incorrect due to a coding error.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, glad, just to explain that for you. So basically what happened is our, our most, one of our most kind of expensive programs is our ski and snowboard club. And so basically, when the money is brought in for that program, because most of it goes to Mohawk to cover the instructors, the, the, the equipment, et cetera. Basically, we're supposed to put that, as Barbara kind of explained it to me in in layman's terms, we're supposed to put that into kind of a a holding account. And then basically, the majority of that go, comes, so any money we take in goes into this little holding account. Then the majority of that gets paid out to Mohawk and the remainder gets put into the revenue. The problem was because there was so much of a shuffle with, you know, without having a director, et cetera, some things got coded incorrectly and all of that money we took in got put into revenue instead of the holding account. So not only is the revenue all skewed because we didn't take in ten thousand dollars. But also the expenses are skewed because now our expenses show us as having paid out ten thousand dollars more or less to Mohawk, which is incorrect as well. We actually have zero expenses. And our revenue should only be a few hundred dollars. So I haven't even had time to sit down, Barbara and I have a meeting today to to rectify that, but that's why you're seeing the skew like it is.
Okay, I mean, that's, that's fair. But but the proposed, the proposed revenue this coming year is forty-eight thousand eight hundred, so which is significantly higher than than the eleven thousand seven fifty, so you're hoping to bring in much more this year. Revenue.
We are, but a lot of that will be due to increases in the fees of all these programs.
Okay.
Right, but also there are, I mean, this was probably the most, took the the biggest hit with the pandemic. I mean, just looking at the numbers. There was no, camp was canceled, most of the classes were canceled. ASP had to close down for a short amount of time. There were, you know, all of those programmatic pieces that would have brought in revenue, you can just see in the fiscal year twenty-one, especially. They just, because everything was suspended, that's what happened to that revenue in in twenty-one for sure. And it was, you know, for for continuing, you know, the second year of a widespread pandemic to bring in the, you know, the revenue that you all brought in was yeoman's work by the commission.
One other thing, Lynn or Jared, I know at the meeting last night, it came up that there's a huge push by people running the programs and by parents to go to online registration, which would mean an extension of our existing computer usage. Can you address that? Because I don't think it's in this.
It is not.
Yeah, I'll address that, yeah. Rufus, thank you for bringing that up, I appreciate it. So yeah, basically, one of the things I had talked about with the commission from the get-go was having online registration and program management software, which is, you know, basically it's the way all rec departments are going for a variety of reasons, but I mean, one of the biggest benefits and advantages of it, aside what it could do for our office is the fact that it give resident, it gives residents an easy way to sign up for programs, a convenient way. And like I said, on the backend, it gives us a a great tool for managing all of our programs and I I can go into the details if you guys have questions specifically. But basically, as I've spoken about with Jean, we, our website host for the town is Civic Rec, Civic Plus, sorry. And they have a, an arm of their company called Civic Rec. Civic Rec is exactly what I just, you know, mentioned, it's it's online registration, program management, all soup to nuts, comprehensive, you know, software for rec professionals. And basically, I do have experience with this program in my previous place of employment. We just installed and began using that about a year ago and it transformed everything that we did. Our residents were so much happier. You could sign up for a program in literally three minutes. It kind of acts like an online store, you go on, you pick the programs you want to sign up for, you add them to your cart. You go to checkout, it prompts you to add in your shirt size, you know, list any disabilities or allergies, agree to our waiver and and hold harmless agreement. Yada, yada. And, you know, basically, like I said, on our end, then we could then, you know, make teams using the software, create schedules using the software. You know, give coaches limited access so that they could go on and contact their teams and and look at their practice schedules, so it it really had a lot of great features, the, you know, reports for revenue were great. We basically hooked it up. It was hooked up to, you know, the the town bank accounts and money was deposited, you know, on the daily and reports were sent weekly to our finance director. So there's just so many features that make life easier for everyone involved and the cost, all things considered, is rather minimal. I don't have a quote yet, I did reach out to the company and hopefully I'll have one, but basically when we rolled it out in Kent, we had to pay a one-time three thousand dollar fee for the build-out of everything because they literally build you an entire webpage, you know, kind of shopping hub. And after that, it was two thousand dollars a year, but they do price based on your residency and expected income. The town of Kent in New York, where I worked previously, our income was a lot, our revenue was significantly higher than it is here in Kent, Connecticut. So I wouldn't expect we'd be paying, you know, that two thousand twenty-five hundred dollars a year would probably be less than that. And then, like I said, there's that circa three thousand dollar fee to set this all up in the first place. I know the commission was, it seemed like unanimously supporting that, Lynn could speak to that, you know, certainly and Rufus as well. But I think it's it's twenty twenty-two and it's, you know, that's the, that's the modern technology now and I think it would be a great look for us, for our residents. Obviously, it's a very small department, so, you know, online registration and whatnot certainly acts as as a AI assistant, you know, helping out with programs, so to speak. So I I'm a huge proponent of it. I know almost no rec department that hasn't moved to it and everyone I've spoken to has just, it it transforms the world, rec world, so.
Yeah, and just to just for frame of reference. All of the programs except ASP, which is registration through Eventbrite. Pretty much everything else is paper, so paper applications that Jared has to process, paper hold harmless agreements that that users have to sign and that physical paper comes into the office, so there is an enormous amount of paper and it's, it, we don't need that, we don't, you know, there's no need for it when you have this software tool that can integrate everything, make it, the convenience factor is huge. And the families that are moving here, that's the expectation, is having that convenience factor, not having to I don't even know where, if I have envelopes in my house, I might have a couple, but, you know, young families don't have envelopes. Many of them don't even have printers in their homes, so to be able to meet the the client in their In their, their place of convenience is really important for us as we are public servants and our, our whole purpose is to. Um, serve the public. Um, it's also gonna give Jared and Lynn a lot of data. And a lot of data in a, in an easy-to-find canned reports, so they can come back. You know, year after year, month after month with, with true user data. Um, to see how these programs are growing so that we can make those, the smart decisions and they can make the smart pitches for. For what's working um, for the department.
So I will say, oh, sorry.
No, that's okay, go ahead.
Okay, I was just gonna say, um, for the people who still wish to sign up traditionally and whatnot, that's not off the table. So um, the way we did it in my previous town was we actually did away with all paper, everything. If someone wanted to call in, we'd just take their registration over the phone, we'd literally log into the portal. And add them as administrators to the program, take their credit card number, put it in, it's all secure. Um, and then the people who were just, hey, I'm in the town hall and I wanna see what's up and I wanna sign up. We'd have them come into the office, sit with us and we'd just, you know, sign them up that way. So it doesn't pigeonhole us into any one specific way. And the other bonuses, and I think everyone will be like rah rah about this, is we currently don't have a way to accept credit card. And so uh, now we will, and it all comes as one nice package. And um, it's not, it's, it's if, you know, if you're doing ski and snowboard club, okay, fine, you're signing up for a twenty-dollar program. You got twenty dollars cash, you're signing up for ski and snowboard club, plus lift tickets, plus rentals, and that costs three hundred fifty dollars, you know. It's, a lot of people would like the option to put that on their credit card if they could, and that would be able to offer that. So I mean, I don't think, I don't think there's a single negative to it. And even if you'd say the one negative, oh, it's gonna cost us a little money, it will, but it's not a crazy expense. And the increased efficiency and as Gene said, the increased data, just the, the increased ability to run our programs more successfully is well worth. That expense and I think everyone in the community will be, you know, if, if, if in a program has to be raised from twenty dollars to twenty-five dollars. Because the, the board would like to offset the cost of that, um, I don't think anyone would ever, ever fight you on that, so I, I think it's a home run.
So if we were to add that to. This, um, you know, I'm not really, I'm not sure where that.
I think they'd have to make up a new line item for it.
Yeah. We can check with Joyce.
I was just checking math, um, I, I mean, I see that the, the total income on this budget worksheet is forty-eight, eight hundred. Um, I, I just uh, added, unless I'm missing something, I just added all the numbers of the expenses, uh, because it doesn't have um. A total expense there for fiscal year twenty-three, so I added all that together and it's a hundred and eighty-three thousand, eight, eight oh one. So um, so that's, that, that's what, that's what the proposal is for the fiscal twenty-three, is that correct?
Plus the three thousand, well, whatever we're gonna add for this computer.
Whatever we may.
Website update.
Okay, so, so just, yep, good, so um, uh, yeah, and then I'm looking, I'm looking at um. The, the February eighteenth proposed budget for the entire town, for all of the, all of the departments. Uh, and I'm actually looking at another document that has recre, that has recreation. Um, and, and on that one, fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, it has proposal of a hundred and seventy-seven thousand, one ninety-six. Uh, for a percentage over current year budget of four point seven percent. So what we're talking about here is not a hundred and seventy-seven, one ninety-six, but at this point, one eighty-three, eight oh one. For an increase of eight point six percent over the previous year, so.
What, what line are you looking at?
I'm looking at the proposed budget of two thousand eighteen, um, and it is.
Two thousand eighteen, you mean two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three?
Uh, two eighteen, two thousand twenty-two proposed budget, um, that uh, we've been working off of. Um, and uh, it says.
Oh, February eighteenth, gotcha, I just need the, what line are you looking at?
It is after line three thirty-nine, so um, so after that training. And um. And then the community house, swift house, and I think KCS ball field maintenance is also under that, but I'm just looking at the line past three thirty-nine. It's a hundred and seventy-seven, one ninety-six.
So where's the, the difference?
Uh, I mean, yeah, it's uh, the, what's, what's, I mean, there's a few changes there, the biggest change, it does have um. Park maintenance there, line uh, three thirty-two at twenty-three thousand, that, that goes up to forty-eight on the, on the worksheet here. Um, and there's a few other changes. And just an, another question I have on the budget uh, worksheets, uh, i- in the notes next to director salary sixty thousand, does that say no pension?
Yes, because it doesn't start. Right away, so that wouldn't be included, because there will be additional costs like um. You know, the, we don't know the health insurance or the pension costs or things like that when we're doing this budget, so that will also be added. And at a later date.
So, so this will be much, this will be higher than one eighty-three, eight oh one with pension added and other things?
Yes.
Okay, so this isn't, this isn't fully complete until we know a few other facts.
Correct, that park and rec doesn't have those numbers.
Okay, what, what, do you know when we'll get those numbers?
That's health insurance and stuff, with that's stuff that park and rec commission doesn't deal with, that's. Treasurer, Gene, whoever, I don't know, those numbers are added later.
All right, I think, I think we need to know those fairly quickly from someone, Gene or elsewhere, um, but, but that needs to be added to this, to this worksheet, I believe.
And don't forget Lynn, twenty-five thousand of that is just gonna be hopefully one-time thing to fix the drainage, it, it's not, we're not increasing. Twenty-five thousand every year, so that we would love to.
But uh, but yeah, but I think we need, we need some more data, I think, on this budget worksheet, um.
Well, the health insurance is in there. So what are we?
It's not on our worksheets.
Not in your worksheet, okay.
No, but it's in the budget, three, line three twenty-six.
Yes, no, it is, it is. So I think, I, then I think the, this, this proposed budget of two eighteen, two thousand twenty-two needs to be adjusted. Based on this worksheet. At some point, I mean, doesn't happen.
So. Yeah, I don't know why.
I think you're looking at something that was turned in a while ago and then the two-ten proposed budget. Is a more updated.
Well, two eighteen is just five days ago, so uh, that's.
Right, two eighteen is the most recent one.
That's the most recent.
Difference is just the, um. Is the hourly employees.
Hourly employees, uh, park maintenance has changed, so, so there's been a few changes here that need to be added to that. Those are the two biggest ones, I think.
I, I think park maintenance had already been changed.
Oh, when they pulled the twenty-five out of the capital, that needs to get, yep, that needs to get added back.
Yeah, that, that says twenty-three thousand on this version.
Right, so it needs to be put back, it needs to be put on here. And then there's an increase in the hourly, should be fifty-five, four ninety-six.
Yeah, that says uh, on, on this version of proposed budget, says forty-six, six, eight, eight, so that has gone up quite a bit as well. So, we need to consider that.
Yeah, so I think those are the three things that need to just be. Match the worksheet. Are there any other questions for Lynn and Jared? Oh, Rufus just dropped off. Hopefully he'll be back.
I'm here, I see him.
Oh, you are?
There he is.
There we go. Okay, um, any other questions from the board?
Oh, I have a question though, um, the computer or website update? Not the computer update, but the website update, are we gonna add a line item for that and how much?
So, um, I think we can probably wait until Jared gets a quote from Civic Plus.
Yeah, they should be able to provide that pretty quickly, they usually just ask a few feeler questions, residency, projected income, et cetera. And they can, they can whip that up, I would assume, I mean, it's Wednesday today, but I, I'd say early next week should have that.
All right.
And then my only other question, um. The ball field maintenance line, what is, and this is, once again, this is just cause I'm new, but what is the, the deal with that? So was, what is, what's, I actually don't have that on my budget worksheet, so um, can you guys just fill me in on that?
So from, and Lynn, um, and Joyce, if you can just fill in the gaps. My understanding is that it was a small subcommittee of the commission.
Yep.
And it, excuse me, and it was, I, I think it's sort of gone dormant. Um, in the last year or so, correct?
Or less.
Couple of years.
So did they not, did they submit, who submits the budget for that line? Did they, did any, anyone?
Um, I'm not really.
Sure, Park and Rec originally submitted it, but then at a previous meeting with us. Because it. It was originally, it, it wasn't in the past historically a park and rec line item. Lynn, I think your previous, I mean, um, Gene, didn't you guys switch that?
Well, I think Kent School had some on their budget, but then they took it out of their budget and so. It was between Park and Rec and Kent Center to take care of the fields and Park and Rec. Um, basically did that and the fields fell apart a number of years ago. And um, we did a huge upgrade overhaul on them to make them Little League compliant. And we need to keep up with that in order to, you know, if you go by a year or two, the fields. Get wrecked, so it really needs to be, um, you know, done at the right times in order to keep the field. Done correctly and um, there's the clay, you know, every once in a while, the clay and stuff has to be fixed, I don't know all those things. Jared would know all that stuff better and timeframe and when that stuff needs to be redone, but um.
Yeah, that's, you know, that's kind of my concern, why I, I know I brought it up with Lynn the other day. And I, you know, I was speaking to Miranda about it, John a little bit, that's why I was just concerned, um. Because, yeah, ball fields are fickle and as Lynn, you know, perfectly said. You know, you let them go for a little bit, it, it really becomes a, a snowball effect. So I was just kind of wondering where we stand, what, you know, what the budget is looking like, you know, for the upcoming fiscal year for that. Because I do think they're gonna need a decent amount of TLC and I wanna make sure, you know, if spring comes, that we can, you know, really hit the ground running there.
So the last meeting was March sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Um, and it was John Grant, Marty Lindemeyer, Miranda as the interim. As, oh no, just as I think a member of the public and Leslie Ferris. And they discussed the playing field conditions with development of recommendation of scope, for scope and sequence. Of recommended repairs, refurbishment for sod, repair, replace the equipment shed and potential for bird nuisance abatement. And then also discuss playing field budget and development of recommendation for contractor support. So Lynn, do you know if in past years, that committee came to the commission and said, this is what we think the budget should be for the following year?
I believe they did, they are, yeah. I can't remember the actual task, if they're, because they're on their own line, it makes them seem like they're more individualized than, than like a park and rec committee.
Yeah, so the minutes do say at the top, Kent Park and Recreation Commission Playing Field Subcommittee. And this is the previous set of minutes, Bruce Adams, John Grant, Marty Lindemeyer, Leslie Ferris. Um. So it, it does appear that it's a subcommittee of the commission. So maybe that could go on a, on the next. Agenda for your commission to sort of have a discussion about where that. Subcommittee should go.
Yeah, Lynn and I were discussing that yesterday and I um, I definitely think it's super important that we. We get that resurrected and just start really, you know, kind of evaluating the current situation of the fields. And, you know, coming up with a, you know, an overarching plan for how we're gonna move forward. So I, I think Lynn, you and I were both in agreement that, you know, it's best we, we kickstart that process.
I uh, I just ran new numbers here and, and I, this could be wrong, uh, if I made a mistake here, but uh, but going off this budget. Uh, this, this budget worksheet and then going off the proposed budget uh, for the whole town that I see here. Um, I'm, I'm, I'm getting a number of two hundred and three thousand, nine oh seven. Um, if you add, if you add the pension for next year, um, and, and these additions from the, from the worksheet, so um. That's an increase of thirty-four thousand, six seventy-one, I could be wrong, uh, but uh, but that needs to be, that needs to be added to proposed budget.
Yeah, Barbara, Barbara can add that all to the workbook and get us a new updated sheet.
Yeah, that will, that will influence a lot of this.
So Lynn, the, um, does that sound like a, a plan? I don't, not sure if that eighty-seven fifty number is the right number for the ball fields.
Yeah, I'm not sure either, I know we have um, some quotes from turf management that we use. And I don't know if the fields need to be, you know, for the clay or anything needs to be fixed, um, or the. The dugout, I, you know, I guess we do the dugouts now, even though that's kind of Kent Center, but um. You know, things like that, the, the uh, shed maintenance that may be able to come out of just park and rec budget. As opposed to ball fields maintenance.
Mm-hmm.
Depending on what we can get in there, um, maybe, maybe BOE can chip in some to help, you know. They do half and we do half, I don't know, that's something we wanna approach them on and see if they can contribute towards the fields.
So it, I, it, I think it would behoove everyone to. Sort of march forth with trying to get some numbers on what you think would really be needed. It, it might, you might need to have a special park and rec meeting to get the group together to, you know, reconstitute the committee. Um, but I think it makes sense to. Give you the opportunity to come back to the board with a number for that, because it's, I mean, the, the use. For the other programs has really skyrocketed and we don't wanna miss, you know, the. Huge amount of programs that you would be holding on those fields over the summer into the fall. Um. If there was, you know, if we didn't have money in it for, for some sort of maintenance and upkeep, that was a realistic number.
Well, it's not just, it's not just those programs, those fields are used by Kent Center School.
So, yeah, and from a safety standpoint, I think, um, that's pretty, pretty important.
I mean, John was the holdover from that committee, he's the one who gave us the fifty thousand dollar, I don't know, you know, but anyhow.
That is. John and Miranda are on it and um, I don't know if Marty would still consider being on there. And Jared, as a huge baseball player and fan and, and new director would be on it, so we could go back to four. If Marty doesn't wanna continue, we could find a fourth person.
Yeah, I have a lot of uh, experience in um, you know, ball field maintenance at this point in my career. So I definitely, really, uh, I, I think your plan makes the most sense, Gene, we gotta, you know, kickstart getting this committee back together. And in a very expedited fashion, determine what our needs are and, you know, the finances of those needs, um, which. Um, I appreciate the opportunity to. um, I appreciate the opportunity to kind of come back to you guys and say, hey, this is realistically eighty-seven hundred. I mean, honestly, just looking at the fields the other day and in my mind's eye, knowing what it takes to, you know, um, rehabilitate fields, it seems like a low number. So I do think that we need to, um, we need to do our homework though. And, and, uh, you got my word that we will.
Great. And Darlene has her hand up and she put a thumbs up. Do you wanna?
Just chiming in, chiming in naturally, I'm a fan and support the, the idea that this committee be, um, revitalized and, and be enforced, um, because the fields are such an important part to the community, the school and, and, and all. Um, just a little tidbit of history as far as when the committee was first formed. It was a representative from the Board of Selectmen, a representative from Board of Ed, a representative from Park and Rec. So in, in your suggestion of going back to, is Marty interested? Naturally Marty's no longer on Board of Ed, so you may want to consider looking at that. It was Bruce in the sense of Board of Selectmen. So not to say that that can't be changed, but to just try to understand, because it was a real, long-term discussion between, um, all three boards of who was really ultimately responsible for the maintenance and who wanted to take on that responsibility. And that was at least the most qualified compromise, that they equally took a share in their commitment to what would be done for the fields and, and maintaining them. So I would hate to lose that concept, um, because it would, it was never, um, resolved as far as where did it really fall? Just so you have that information.
Great. Thanks for that.
Does that mean that the selectmen put some field maintenance money in their budget?
No, that's why that, that, yeah, yeah. Good, good try. I give you credit for that one. Um, no, that is why that specific separate line was developed and, and why it stands alone. So.
So John is on both commissions. For, for commission.
You may want to separate, you're, you're losing a, a, another individual's energy and, however you want to do that, but I just.
They come to the table with, yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
And I think it makes sense to keep that. You know, that was probably set via a formal motion by the commission. And it seems to make sense to.
But what, what, what line is that separate line?
It is line, um, in the budget document, it's line three fifty-five.
Okay.
But just before the transfer station, it's a standalone line.
Okay.
Can I go back to the drainage question, money? Um, it's still in the capital and it's in the operating budget?
No, we took, uh, took it out. Excuse me, I took it out of capital.
I'm looking at the capital that came attached to the two eighteen and there's fifty thousand for paving and drainage in twenty seventeen, uh, I'm sorry, uh, twenty-seven and fifty thousand and twenty-eight. So there's a hundred thousand.
Go ahead.
No, that's, I'm just asking, is it the same drainage? Is it?
No, it's different drainage. That, uh, drainage is more for the Emory Park Road.
And, and what's the, and what's the drainage in the operating budget?
Um, to fix the trails at, um, Emory, at Kent Commons and the, um, yeah, the path that goes up into the park and on the walking trail.
Ju- just because I heard that it was taken out of capital. It's not, so it's just different.
It, it was not listed as that in capital. It was listed as, um,
It's just paving.
Trail structure or something.
Okay, thank you.
So the only other thing is establishing how much we should put into the, uh, the, the line for the online registration, which I will. How would you guys like me to communicate that to you once I get a quote back? Just Jean thinks she's speaking. Jean, you've been muted the whole time. You're still muted. That's why I was talking over you. I didn't even know you were speaking. I'm sorry about.
Sorry about that. So originally in the capital, there was a line for playing fields and ballpark for fifty thousand and a line for trail structure and maintenance for twenty-five thousand. That twenty-five was moved out into the operating budget and the fifty was what remained.
It was moved out and renamed, reappropriated.
Over into operating. And that's why there's that actually blank line in the capital right now. So what was your question, Jared?
Sorry, I didn't mean to speak over you.
No, you weren't. I was.
Um, no, I was just saying, how would you, once I get a quote from Civic Rec, um, would you just like me to forward it to you? Or is there a form, more formalized way you'd like me to communicate that?
Um, we'll probably, um, schedule. Uh, how does this usually work, Joyce? Do we have them come back for a replay? Or can we just, we just take the quote and have Barbara add it in?
Did the commission agree that this is the, the way that they want it moved? Do they make any kind of forward motion?
No, there was no mo-, there was no motion made.
Okay, that.
What? Motion made to, are you talking about a motion made in Park and Rec to remove?
For the Civic Rec.
For that program and the use of it.
I don't have to believe, did we make a motion on that last?
No, we didn't. We didn't.
Cause we didn't have numbers.
Right.
Our next meeting will be in two weeks.
So I, I think you can go ahead and get the quote. And then I'm just looking at the calendar. When's your next meeting, Lynn?
Jared.
And now you, Jared, you're on mute. I didn't do that.
It's, uh, it's Monday, the seventh.
Okay. Okay. So I think that still keeps us on a timeline, on a, a fine timeline. So yeah. Get the quote, um, and then bring it to the commission. And then the commission can, or however, your, whatever your process is, get it to Barbara.
Excellent. We can do that.
Any other questions from the board? Thanks, Jared and Lynn.
Thank you. Thank you guys for having us. And Glenn, it was a very, it was a pleasure meeting you.
Absolutely. We'll see you soon.
Yep, most definitely.
Okay. And I know we were gonna do, Barbara next. Looking for her on the.
She's not on the call.
Oh, I think because she's not usually in on Wednesday mornings. So we're gonna have to reschedule Barbara. So she, she has to be in, um, porn wall, I believe, this morning. We'll get her rescheduled. We will go to tax collector next. We're just moving around. Am I still on mute? Nope, I am muted. Okay. Good morning.
Good morning. I don't know if you want to go line by line through this budget, or if you just want to hit, how would you like to do this?
Sure. Let's go line by line.
Okay, um, salary I put in for six percent for me. Have you discussed salary increases for anyone in this building?
No, we're gonna, um, we're gonna do them at the end. So this is really for, primarily for your operations, but it's your time, so.
No, that's okay. I just, you know, that's, that's, I believe that's COLA this year is six percent. So that's why I put it in. So I made the assumption you were going with COLA, but that's an assumption. Um, the assistant, um, my assistant started out at twenty dollars this year. The arrangement is she gets a dollar a course. She's already taken one course. We'll start the next one next month and will be done by the end of the fiscal year. So that's two courses. So that takes her to twenty-two. Then, when you add the six percent on top of that, that takes us to the end of this year. So then going forward for the next year, starting July first, she's at twenty-two plus whatever the actual cents are. And she will be taking two more courses next year to complete the four in the cycle. So that's where I sort of came up with, um, fifteen dollars a week, fifteen hours per week at twenty-five forty-four an hour for fifty-two weeks. That's where I came up with the nineteen eight forty-three. So any changes you make to that, let me know. Going through the rest of the budget, I kept supplies, postage. Postage is paid in two ways. Part of it is paid through quality because they do the initial July billing. So that's a, that's part of the QDS contract that I've given you. The thirty-five hundred is for the, um, delinquent statements that we send out every month. And that's just, I kept it steady. I know postage went up, but I'm hoping to, delinquents go down. Uh, notices stayed the same, mileage stayed the same, even though the cost has gone up, we're hopefully doing more this kind of a visit rather than traveling to different sites. Um, data processing, I did give you the two breakouts. If you have any questions on those, there, the paperwork describes what's going on. Paperwork I didn't give you is, uh, the assessor and the tax collector belong to the cloud, which through QDS. And that's an additional five thousand dollars that is paid through the town computer site. And that's, um, for the assessor, PP, for the Kama project, for the utility bill, billing and for the tax collector. That's where we get into the bandwidth question. In order to participate in the cloud through QDS, we need a minimum of a hundred MB bandwidth. And that's where we've been having a lot of trouble lately. It is being monitored now by QDS and I think by UCOTech on a regular basis. It's something you need to address, especially if you're talking about adding other programs in the building. Nothing against Park and Rec doing what they want to do, but we don't have the bandwidth for, for it, or you need to prove that you have the bandwidth. And that's a question. And I think, um, you're gonna have to just keep looking at that. Fees for delinquents is, has stayed the same, uh, dues conferences have stayed the same. No, I think I did a slight increase for conferences because it includes the hours for the assistant to go to class plus the conference I go to. So that's the budget.
Thanks, Deb. The fees for, fees slash delinquents, delinquencies, what percentage, um, of the total bills that go out, do you have to then send a delinquent?
Uh, that's what we send to the Department of Motor Vehicles. Anytime you are delinquent in your car bills, we send that directly to the Department of Motor Vehicles and you cannot register, register your car until that is paid. So that's what that is for. How many car bills become delinquent? Um, if you're worried about the cost of that, a lot of towns do charge per car to have that put on. And that is passed directly to the delinquent taxpayer. If you're interested in offsetting the cost, I can, I can do that.
So it, um, I guess I have a different question from what you're talking about. So that two hundred and fifty dollars on, um, zero, one, seven, four, five, three is what you pay to the DMV?
And it allows us to get into the whole DMV system.
Okay.
The delinquencies are part of it. We can, we can get into their system to access different things that we need to do in order to, um, take care of the motor vehicle bills.
Okay. So my, really my question is, of the total tax bills that get sent out every year, what percentage then have, then also get sent a delinquent bill?
To the Department of Motor Vehicles?
No, just in general.
Oh, um, well, we average.
Percentage get the pink?
We, and this, this past January was a remarkably unusual January. I sent out five hundred delinquent letters in January to people who have never been delinquent before in their life. The only shining grace of this, we got three percent interest. And believe me, our interests, where we've well met our forty thousand dollars in delinquent interest. I don't know why that happened this year. So I did, to give a number, um, what did we average, um, probably it would be a high of five hundred for a month to maybe a low of a hundred.
How many total bills are sent out?
Um, we initially send out around six thousand.
So that's fairly small.
You know, with the interest we charge, we more than bring back enough to pay for the postage and the manpower.
That's only eight percent and that's a high.
That's a huge number. Yes. That, that equated eight percent of an eleven million dollar budget. You're getting it to money.
And average prior years, is it half that?
Half might be, hmm, three quarters.
Okay. Um, the, on the supply line, what does that cover?
We, uh, spend a great deal of money on ink for our printer. It's one of those, when you buy a, I won't say cheap printer. It was not a cheap printer. It's a good printer, but on the backside, you spend a lot for cartridges for, for ink.
So that's the lion's share of what you're. So that's the lion's share of what you're spending it on?
Yeah, but I do want to keep stressing the bandwidth because I do want to. I, I have talked, I have spoken to a company about. Credit cards. And because people have found that the current system we have is a little cumbersome. So we have a new system. We're all set to go. I have money in my budget to pay for it. I just need to be able to make sure that it will work in this building. So as soon as I can get bandwidth assurance, then I can go ahead. Get the computers because I'm not even sure whether we're, I know the assessor is upgrading her hardware. I'm not sure whether the hardware here is being upgraded. And in the past, the two offices have always been connected. For some reason this year, I'm hearing there's a disconnect. I. I need to straighten all of that out before I go ahead with the new computer system. And they're ready to go and I have the money in the budget. So.
And is that in this budget as well?
It's the money, it will be paid for in this budget. There's no ongoing, there's going forward, there's no charge to the town. The setup fee will be paid for this year will be up and running by July 1st.
Okay, and so there's no ongoing subscription or anything?
No.
So it's free?
Which is what we're doing now. Our credit card pay, credit card company at the present time is also free.
Do you get any? So do you have a, like an admin portal that you can log into and get reports of how much? Usage there is of the, of that portal for people who are paying via credit card?
Once a year, we get a report.
Oh, that's it?
Yeah, I don't really care how many people. I'm only interested in tax dollars. And that I can tell you.
Right, but I, I think from a customer service standpoint and a usage standpoint. Are we?
It's free, so I don't see how we're losing anything.
No, and yeah, I'm not saying that we're losing anything. I think from. There's more to it than just a, are we? What do you get for the free? If you get nothing for the free?
I'm changing, I'm changing the system because I did hear some people were not happy with the present system. That's why we're changing to a new system that is used in a variety of other towns. I have talked to others, I've spoken to other tax collectors. They're happy with it.
Rufus Glenn, any questions?
No, I'm good. Thank you, Debbie.
Hello, thanks, Deb.
You're welcome. See you later.
Onto the assessor's office.
Hi, Jen.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you have a, um, the? Option to turn the camera on?
No, I don't.
Okay.
I don't have that set up like that.
Okay. Um. You have the floor.
Okay.
Following the same, you know, process.
This is, yeah, this is my first go around here as a department head, so my first budget presentation, so. Bear with me. Um. So you said you don't get deep into the salary, just touch on that or?
Yeah, because we see this as your, your time.
Okay.
For discussion.
Well, I start with my notes go down the row from department operations first anyway, so I'll start there.
Okay.
Supplies are up. In my case, same thing with Debbie's, we have the same printer. So costs are up, but mine is mainly up to 50 because I was told by the CAAO, our NADA price guides are going up this year, so I had to. Put a little into the supply line to accommodate that. Um, my postage I'm going down. I'm gonna try to, rather than ordering the postage paid envelopes, I'm going with. Envelopes and stamps separately and see how that works. Try to save a little money there. I don't have. I still have a great deal of mailings, but it has been cut down because quality sends my personal property declarations out for us now. I pay them in the printing and the, that's in the data processing line, so. I'm able to cut the postage line a little. Notices. I just went up because I may have. That is for. The notices or for. Legal notices. And I might have an extra one for a revow coming in. Otherwise I only have one or two a year. So that should be fine. I did go down in the mileage. Because it never seemed quite meet the budgeted amount and, um. I can share the mileage with other towns when I go to meetings and things like that. So. There's a cost savings there and I reduce that. Data processing, that is, I think I gave you the quality quotes. And then vision. And also the Q public online posting for the field cards and the maps. So my. I. The, um, the difference is if I was able to go to what's called a personal property Kama system. Then the personal, then that quality would go up $1,155. That's the cost of that system. And it would cut down in manually checking the depreciation from the previous year. It's more intuitive. It, it. The history, once it's put in, it's established and you can see it rather than pulling the previous year's declarations by hand and comparing. Who disposed of any assets and double checking all that. You just put it in. After the first year, it's really efficient. I have it in the other town I work in. And the only issue I have with that before I could decide is again, where we're at with this broadband. How I, how I do with the new hard drives. What happens going forward because of quality and vision already being in a cloud. I hesitate to go ahead and say yes to the personal property Kama until I'm sure I have enough. Computer, you know, enough systems, operations to, to accommodate that. The mapping, it did go up an extra 250 because I would like to add a mapping layer to plot the sales. In preparation of the revaluation, it'd be good to see what the neighborhood sales are. That way the revow company, whoever wins bid could utilize that as well and we'll start tracking that now. We're already in the process of starting our two-year. Revaluation. Projects, we have to do sales verification forms. We have to do income and expense forms starting this year. I have to get bids ready. So it's a two-year. Process of the whole revow and that would just be one little thing. Um, and then you take the telephone out. My dues, therefore Litchfield County assessors and CAAO and we can share the cost with other towns, so I didn't increase them. Conferences, that's also. Conferences are for me to go for continuing education for, so there's also the professional development. So conferences I would have to attend to do the continuing education. And the professional development is left for the newly hired assistant to take courses. Um, again, there's a cost savings because she works in other towns, so we would all be able to share in that. And same with me, we can share all that with other towns, so we can keep that. Line item the same.
Oh, sorry, go ahead. That's, um, the cost share is with two other towns for you?
As well as the new assistant.
Okay. Thanks.
So other than that, it's salary. I don't know if you want to just, me to tell you how I came up with the figures. It's not really the across the board 6%. What I did was. I did a salary survey using the CAAO salary survey and I got a per parcel average. So based on the six towns in region one as well as. Barkham, Sherman and Washington, which are very, very comparable towns. I came up with the per parcel average of $21 and that comes out to the salary. And then I added an additional. I added to it because I am down some time with an assistant. In the office, which the previous assessor had. So that's how I came up with my salary. That doesn't include a 6% cost of living on that. That was this, again, a survey from two years ago. So. You know, that's to be discussed. The first assist, the new assistant. She started at 24. She'll come, hopefully complete a course before the end of this budget season and be eligible for the dollar raise. And then if she's able to take and complete another one during the budget year, that would put her at $26 an hour. So that's her budgeted amount for 10 hours a week. And. She won't always work 10 hours a week. You know, more, more often than seven, but because there'll be time off where, you know. We need her to fill in extra days or she can have the laptop and work remotely. Our, our job is cyclical, so there's busy times of the year where she might work just. She might work the 10 hours, she might work 12, and then there's days where she can only do six or something like that. So it's a 10-hour average. Um, and then the other assistant who's been here 15 years, because of the new hire being put at possibly $26 an hour. When he's been here for 15 years, I felt that the spread should be a little more. It's currently in the budget at 2719. So I did bring up the assistant. My one idea is to have him be salary instead of hourly. I don't know if the board would be receptive to that. Um, that would get him more in a, get the job done. You're paid to get the job done, no matter how many hours it takes. We don't have to track them. That is how we worked in the other town I work in. That was what was set up and it worked really well. He can work remotely. He can be here. He can be sharing time doing meetings and other things. Again, he works in another town too. So. Uh, I just think it's a more fair way to do it. Otherwise. At that. I am figuring I'm at 12,500. If you want to break that hourly, that would be. It's the $34 an hour. So at minimum for him in your discussions, I think he should be at least increased to $31 an hour because again, the spread just isn't wide enough for Jimmy's expertise and. Length of time with this town. Um. That was pretty much it for salaries. My only other thing I did not do in the budget. I spoke to, and Jean, I believe before, it was an idea I've spoken with Darlene and Donna about this as well as Debbie. I think Jimmy has a great base of knowledge in the IT area in this town and I think we should. Instead of just asking him for favors as he's here on Mondays, I think we should acknowledge it. Give him an additional $2,500 a year stipend or however you want to call it to be an in-house IT person. This is what he does in Roxbury. And he's a great wealth of knowledge in that. He's, he's done a lot of work there, brought it up to the times. Any of us have issues, we call on him and he, he's there. Even if it's off hours, we have an issue, we can go to Jimmy. I just think it would be a little easier than. Always relying on just the tech and the E-ticket for every little thing. I, I just, I think there's a need here for someone like that. On a day-to-day basis.
Thanks, Jen. On the. The mapping layer. That you wanted to add, would that be a public? On the public side as well, or is it only on the admin side?
I'm not sure, Jimmy, I know you're, if you're still on there. Would Q public pick up that layer? HDA would do it. Would Q public pick that up?
Uh, Q public could. It would depend on if we wanted to add. Add that to Q public. There's no reason we couldn't.
And we don't know if that would be another charge to them, though.
Yeah, I don't know that.
It was more of an in-house revow tool.
Okay. So that's good to know.
We would have a print of it in the office. For sure.
But it's really more of a tool for your office rather than a.
Yeah, and it would be something, we wouldn't do it ongoing. It would just be for the benefit of the revow.
Oh, okay. So that additional. Cost would only be in a couple of budget cycles?
Correct.
Okay.
And the other layer, I don't think we have that I could also ask them to do. I don't think it's that. Costly is to plot the actual structures on the map, so then you have an idea where the buildings are. We've done that in my other towns as well. People find that kind of useful. Certainly for only assessment purposes, it's not. A depiction, a survey, but it's just close rendition of where the buildings might be.
And just a ballpark, what, what would, what is something like that? Additional charge look like?
I think it would still fit in that 1,250.
Okay.
Rufus or Glenn, any questions?
I don't, I don't have any.
I'm good.
Okay. Thanks, Jen.
Okay, just, well. Do you need anything further about the salary or IT or that's that?
Um, I. Don't think so. It would be interesting if you can just send Joyce the. How you. The breakdown of the salary survey through, you said CAO.
Yeah.
Etiquette assessors. Something, association. How you got to that number of the per parcel average of. You said $21.
Right.
Yeah, if you can just sort of lay that out, it would be helpful for me. And, um, what's the acronym NADA, just for informational purposes? The NADA price guide under 16201 supplies, I think.
National appraisal guides.
National Automobile Dealers Association.
Oh, there you go, Jimmy. Doesn't even say it on the book.
And that's a guide that you all use as a tool in the office?
Those are guides that we need. That's the accepted way to do the mass appraisal for the motor vehicles. So we get our books every year for October 1st, updated by NADA.
And that's, has to be a printed thing? If, if there's no. Online tool?
Uh, no, they're printed still. You get, um. I think they have the option of one type is online and that's even, that's costly too. You get, I think they have the option of one type is online, and that's even, that's costly too.
Okay. Thanks again, appreciate it.
Okay.
Glenn, Rufus, you're all set with Jen?
Thank you, Jen.
Thank you.
Alrighty, that brings us to the end of our list. It is, according to Apple, is 12:03, I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thanks for the time, everybody.
Thank you.